Calling to order the Monday, December 6th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Mayor Protam Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henan?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Vilani?
Here.
Mayor Triback?
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion with one amendment, please.
Okay.
I'd like to add, in addition to the existing items, item number six, Resolution R. 41-21, which reads as follows: amended resolution to reapprove commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate application for 2219 Coolidge LLC located at 2219 Coolidge Highway for parcel number 25-18-431-032.
Is there support?
Yes.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker, support from Mayor Protam. Is there any discussion on tonight's agenda or changes? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on the agenda as amended?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Triback?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us this evening is Pastor Tal Sullivan.
Let's pray. God, I thank you for this evening. I thank you for our city council and all of those who serve our city week in and week out. And we're thankful for the time to do business and to be here in person and be able to see each other's faces and process what needs to be done. I pray for wisdom, God, for the council. I also pray that you would bless them and their families, Lord, and their home lives and all the things that weigh on them outside of doing city business. We thank you that in a season like this where there's much celebration for many, there's also, there's also many who are having a hard time celebrating and going through difficult things. And so, we thank you that we can come to you and ask for strength. And we pray, God, for your presence in our city, to be strong and to work and move in people's lives so that they would have rich, full, meaningful lives. And this month especially, there would be a strong sense of your touch. Pray that you would direct the decisions made now. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, we have now reached the public comments portion of our meeting. These are public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on specific agenda items while they are being considered. Remember, council will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign in at the sheet at the clerk's desk. For those of you that are in person, you'll be able to step up to the microphone in just a minute. For those that are attending virtually, participants can utilize the raise hand function by selecting Managed Participants on the bottom of your dashboard and then select the More button in the bottom right corner. The moderator will call your name allowed and unmute you so that you can speak when it's your turn. If you have dialed in, you can be placed in queue for public comment by selecting star nine, and the moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. A reminder that you will have three minutes to speak, and once your three minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, we will read any comments that were emailed to the city clerk at clerk@berkleymich.net prior to 5:00 PM today. We will start first with those that are visiting with us in person. If you would like to make a comment, please come up to the microphone. I didn't think there was going to be anybody, but I just figured I would. I would ask. Ms. Mitchell, we'll go to you next. Any communications that you received to be read?
No, you're on that.
Okay. Ms. Mathis?
There are no hands raised at this time, sir.
We'll give the virtual folks just a couple of quick seconds in case they're trying to figure out how to raise hand or find that More button or dial star nine if you're dialing No?
No, sir.
Last chance. Okay, well, I guess public comment is closed. We now move on to tonight's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 38th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, November 15th, 2021, and the 39th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, November 15th, 2021.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Triback?
Yes.
We now move on to our regular agenda. Would you please read item number one?
Recognitions Presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we will move on to item number two, please.
Presentation, matter of receiving a report from Plant Moran regarding the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021.
Before the presentation, Mr. Baumgarten, would you like to do a brief introduction?
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you and good evening. Every year, the city undergoes a comprehensive financial audit. Plant Moran is the auditor's this year. They've served as our auditors for a number of years now. They go through a broad array of tests to make sure that the city is operating at the utmost peak of the GAAP, which is the generally accepted accounting principles of government. And they yield for you and for the entire public a report, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which you can find on our website, as well as hard copies presented at your place setting this evening. This is a very detailed document, and it goes through item by item. I think it's a useful tool, not only for the council to understand how well administration is meeting their goals of fiscal responsibility, but also how well the public are. It's a tool for the public to understand the same thing. It's a, it goes through dollar by dollar. Every amount that the city spends this year puts in perspective from years past and also provides some insight into trends and analysis that gives some insight into what running a city in the best fiscal manner possible really looks like. So as part of the capstone of this project, Plant Moran is here to make a presentation, giving you the highlights of their work, as well as the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2021. Thanks, sir.
Keith, it looks like it's all you today.
It is. Thank you very much. Good evening. It's nice to be here with you again for the first time in a couple of years. Lisa, sorry she couldn't make it today. She's out of town for work, but there's plenty of good news to share with you, and I'll try not to mess that up here on the evening.
I like that.
Yeah, we love that. Take it.
First of all, thank you to everyone at the city for their cooperation and assistance throughout the audit. The audit touches many departments throughout the city, but in particular, I want to thank the Finance Director and his staff for their assistance during the audit. The audit went very smoothly. We completed the audit without any findings or exceptions that we need to bring to your attention. As the city manager mentioned, we do have the 112-page annual comprehensive report with you to go over today, but rather than flipping through that in any amount of detail, got just a few slides summarizing the financial highlights for the last year. I do want to point out, the city did receive an unmodified opinion on the financial statements again, which doesn't sound great, but is the highest level of assurance we can provide to a set of financial statements. So that's what the city should come to expect on an annual basis and what we're happy to deliver once again for fiscal year 2021. Included in the Independence Auditor Report is an emphasis of matter paragraph pointing out there was a new accounting pronouncement during the year, Gesbe Statement Number 84 related to essentially a redefinition of fiduciary activities. So while that did require quite a bit of analysis on all of the potential fiduciary activities throughout the city, it really resulted in only two main changes, one of which was the reporting of the Retiree Healthcare Trust for the first time as a fiduciary fund. And the second was the movement of the activity that was previously in the agency fund to now be recorded in the general fund. So those changes are detailed in the financial statements. And with that, I'll jump into the graph presentation, first starting with some short-term results in the general fund. Slide number one shows a three-year history of revenue in the general fund, and the total revenue did increase by nearly $1 million. That's largely due to about $850,000 of coronavirus relief funds, so federal money that was passed through the state of Michigan as part of the CARES Act, and that's included in the other total. Of your recurring revenue sources, property taxes remain the largest component of general fund revenue, making up about 63% of the total, and it had a modest increase of just under 3%, largely driven by taxable value increases throughout the city. The second largest source of revenue was again state sources, which includes state shared revenue and money from the local community stabilization authority, and that increased by about 15% from 2020 to 2021. On slide number two, we have a three-year history of expenditures. These did increase significantly from 2020 to 2021 by about a little more than $2 million, but that was largely items of a one-time nature. So there was over $2.2 million in capital outlay, the largest portion of which was a fire truck that was expensed in 2021 that cost nearly $1 million. There were also other vehicles and improvements throughout the capital outlay category. There was also a $733,000 transfer to the Recreation Revolving Fund to support their capital and operations through the last year. So aside from that, there were also some small increases in pension payments and payments for healthcare, but aside from those items, it was pretty much business as usual and relatively consistent expenditures from one year to the next. Slide number three, or excuse me, slide number four charts general fund fund balance for the last several years. You can see it was steadily increasing from 2016 to 2020, as we've shown here. It actually more than doubled if we were to go back to 2014. At the time, it was $3.2 million, and then it went up to over $6.6 million. The last couple of years, there were some small uses of fund balance, but those were planned, and of course, as we talked about with 2021, there were significant capital outlay expenses. So the city's continuing to make improvements in its equipment and infrastructure, and that's reflected here. But overall, there still remains a healthy amount of fund balance on hand. Total at the end of 2021 was $5.1 million. That's spread across the various categories. There's a small amount of non-spendable, which represents prepaid expenses, some restrictions for public safety, the library and community promotion. About $1 million is assigned, which is the amount that's planned to be used in the 2022 budget, and the remaining $2.6 million is unassigned and available for all forms of The next slide, we should switch gears a little bit away from the general fund and look at the Water and Sewer Fund. As you can see, operating revenue did exceed operating expenses, leading to about $1.4 million of operating income, net operating income. Total net position was over $19 million, but the vast majority of that's already invested in capital assets, leaving about $1.8 million unrestricted. So again, that's a healthy amount of net position to have on hand for your activities in the Water and Sewer Fund, but similar to the general fund, it's certainly not excessive, and the city wants to keep an eye on what it does have in reserves to make sure that there is amount on hand for operations, cash flow purposes, potential emergencies, and if there were to be any unexpected downturns in revenue, that you have those reserves on hand to handle those items. And then lastly, on the last slide, we switch gears again away from the short-term results, the results of the last year, and look at the legacy costs and where they stand at the most recent measurement date. So of the city's two pension and one OPEB plans, all of them did improve their funded status over the last year. The municipal employees' pension system increased its funded status to 55%. And it's important to note that that is the trust that's invested with MERS, and MERS has a fiscal year end of December 31st. So that amount, the measurement, the most recent measurement, does not include the very strong financial results that have taken place thus far in 2021. So if that were to have been measured as of June 30th or subsequent to then, it would have had an even higher funded status. So that's good news and something that hopefully will continue throughout the rest of the year and we'll see reflected in next year's audit. The Public Safety Pension Plan increased its funded status significantly. It went from 71% a year ago to 85% at the end of 2021, and that's largely due to the very strong investment performance in that fund. And the OPEB Trust for Retiree Healthcare also improved significantly from 31% to 40%. So while there remain significant long-term liabilities outstanding, it's great to see that these are all trending in the right direction, at least in the last year, but at the same time, add in a word of caution that these are subject to fluctuations in the markets, as well as changes in the actuarial assumptions. And we've seen quite a few of those in recent years with decreasing of assumed rates of return, increasing assumptions for mortality, how long participants will be available alive to collect their benefits. So these are long-term liabilities. They're not expected to be paid off in the near term. It'll actually be decades from the point in time when employees earn these benefits and ultimately retire and collect them all. But certainly something to keep an eye on as the annual contributions do impact the city's budget as well. So aside from those items, there are a couple letters that we're including in the deliverables as well, but I'm happy to report, as I mentioned at the beginning, there were no findings that we needed to bring to your attention. So most times, if there are any adjustments that we identify as part of the audit or flaws in internal controls that we need to bring to your attention, those would be included in those letters, but we have no such items today. So I wasn't planning to go through those letters in any detail, but we would be happy to answer any question on those, as well as mention one more report that will be coming to you in the next couple of months, and that's the report on compliance with federal programs. So as I mentioned, the city spent more than $750,000, which is the threshold for a federal single audit. That's due three months, well, an extra three months after the end of the audit reporting deadline. So that's due at the end of March. We've got that detailed testing essentially complete, but we are tying up some loose ends with the city in terms of overall reporting and some of the control items there. So I can report that as of right now, we haven't identified any issues with the city's spending of that CARES Act money, and that report will be finalized early in 2022, and we'll be happy to deliver those results to you in the coming months. So with that, stop and answer any questions that council has for me.
Questions for Keith this evening as we discuss our unmodified, which is a good thing, audit. Anybody? Wow, you did such a good job. Well, Keith, I know, you know, we've speak, we've spoken a number of times, but obviously we speak at the beginning of this, and as we talk about the process and still in a virtual world, knowing that we're not certainly out of the COVID world yet, and we are still seeing, you know, an increase certainly in Michigan and in other places, is there anything specifically COVID-related that you think is going to impact us or at least our budget? Because, I mean, my personal feeling is we probably won't really know the true results for probably another two years, once, once we're past that, and it's not only the impact on what's happened in our own community, but also in funding in general. Any insight, COVID-specific items we should be aware of or keep our eye on here?
That's a very good question. So as you mentioned, you know, actually, when you think back to the onset of the pandemic, there were some very dire predictions in terms of, first of all, what would happen with the sales tax collections and the city's state shared revenue, and then potential impacts on the real estate market that would impact property taxes. Fortunately, we haven't seen any of those come to fruition to date. You know, looking back at the results over the last couple of years, it's really hard to tell that there was a pandemic going on that could have had these very dire consequences. So as you mentioned, Mayor, you know, the ultimate effects of the economy are, you know, still to be seen, how long this is going to drag on, you know, where it could impact things as we're seeing with the supply chain now, and that leads to inflation and other consequences throughout the entire economy. So the important thing and the best advice I can give to you is just to continue to monitor it, keep an eye on the budget as you always do, look into some, you know, multi-year forecasting to see if there are to be some significant changes, how quickly would they impact the budget, and what can the city do to react to those. So like I said, continue to monitor it, but as of right now, you know, there's no, there's no red flags, there's nothing we're seeing throughout the, the local government client, climate that is impact, starting to impact anyone or appears to be on the horizon, as best we can tell.
Okay, well, that's positive to hear, and as you mentioned, we do a two-year budgeting process, and, you know, the 2020's budget was certainly a little bit different because we didn't know what was going to happen, and many things weren't able to happen, the same on the revenue side. And I think continuing to plan as responsibly as we can as we go through the budget and, you know, not knowing what is going to happen, just trying to make prudent decisions, and as you mentioned, make sure that we have available fund balance as things come up. That's at a healthy level, and we also have a fund balance policy that we certainly are following now that we adopted last year, to continue making sure that we are making decisions that continue to provide the highest quality of services for our residents, but also make sure that we're minding the dollars and cents and honoring our long-term promises and obligations, as you mentioned, as we looked at the pensions as well this evening. Any other questions or comments, Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not a, not a question so much, just a comment and a kudos. First, I want to again applaud and thank you guys for your thoroughness with this report. This continues to be a very comprehensive and thorough document. It's actually very easy to read. It helps understand, helps explain the ins and outs of municipal finance, and it's an informative document as well as an encouraging document, as we've heard in the results tonight. And finally, the kudos to Mr. Pollak and the finance team for all of their fantastic work throughout the year to implement the policies that we set forth here in such a responsible way that, that we can receive an audit such as this. So kudos to the team, and thanks again for, for, you know, the healthy checkup.
Thank you. Glad you enjoyed the reading.
It's fun.
We're kind of nerds like that up here.
That's why we're here.
Any other last-minute comments or observations? All right, well, Keith, again, thank you for being with us, and Mark, as Councilmember Baker, Mr. Pollak, thank you for everything that you and your department continue to do and continue to provide the highest quality reporting for us, giving us the information to make great decisions and continuing to mind our budget. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to item number three, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Motion number M. 7521, matter of amending the City of Berkeley's fee schedule for the public library effective December 13th, 2021.
Is there a motion to approve M. 7521?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think, Mr. Mayor, as you know, the city maintains a comprehensive fee schedule of all the fees that come along with operating under our various departments. The item that comes before you this evening is specific to the library. We're joined by Library Director Church, who has worked with the library board to bring to you the updated items this evening. He's included a memo outlining those changes in your packet.
Thank you, Director, for being with us.
Nice to be back. All right, so we have three items for proposed changes for the fee schedule. We've talked these over at the library board level and bringing them here for final approval. First of all, is just a little update to our credit card payment. That is just an administrative fee. We're not making money on the ability to collect credit card payments, just merely passing along the charges that we incur to provide that service. During COVID, we discontinued our arrangement with our previous vendor. They raised rates. We weren't using it, so we decided to turn it off and are now looking at a service that is used by the city. So we're looking at a 2.85% proposed fee, so that's just a very small increase from where we were at before, and then we'll be able to accept credit cards at the desk. So one thing to keep in mind as we're looking at credit cards, a lot of our charges are just a couple bucks for printing, a couple dollars in overdue fees. Occasionally, it's a meeting room rental, or occasionally it's a donation, but generally it's smaller, smaller charges. The next is to eliminate the new movie rental charges. So you'll recall, a few years ago, we removed old movie rental charges and provided those just as a service to the community, and proposing that we do the same here. And all of this is a step to remove barriers to access. So we want to provide the resources, the collection that the tax dollars pay for without them, the patrons needing to shell out additional dollars to take home, in this case, the movies. And then finally, the lost library card replacement fee. We charge currently a dollar if you lose your library card, and that again is just another small barrier to someone getting back into good borrowing standing with the library. There's not really abuse of this. We don't have people coming in asking for new library cards regularly. Generally, once they've memorized their number, they don't want to lose it and get a new number, so.
I feel like that item is specifically in here for me to thank.
So these last two are really just steps towards providing better, more equitable access to people using the library.
Questions for Mr. Church on the three items that he just mentioned, and as you mentioned, the increases vary minors from 2.75 to 2.85, just for folks out there didn't see that. Councilmember Price? I don't know if that's a maybe or a yes.
Begin or end with me. I'm happy to comment always on anything related to the library. So I just wanted to thank you for bringing these to the library board. As the liaison for the library board, I was there for the conversations, and definitely, as you said, you had the support of the library board in all of these items. I really appreciate your thought and your reasoning for putting these before us to increase the access to libraries' full collection and to prevent barriers of usage, to usage, so that we can be as inclusive and increase circulation and continue to provide great service to all of our residents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vilani?
So with the change to the movie rental charges, how much do you anticipate would be, I guess, lost from not charging for those new rentals?
So pre-COVID, like kind of more regular times, it would be about 150 to 200 a month. So not, not a huge amount, especially following the audit presentation. I mean, it is, it is money, but it's not, it's not a huge figure. So that's, that's why I felt comfortable recommending this.
All right, well, Mr. Church, thank you for everything that you have done and continue to do, leading our library. It is truly a jewel in our community.
Thank you.
And if folks didn't really know that before COVID, they really know that now, and that you've been able to do and able to continue to provide. So I appreciate you consistently looking for ways to increase access and to keep our library as impactful as it can possibly be in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M. 7521?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Triback?
Yes.
Thank you.
We now move on to item number four, please.
Resolution number R. 4021, a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, authorizing and supporting the Parks and Recreation Department to apply for a Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Legacy Design and Access Grant for $50,000 for inclusive play at J.C. Park from the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve R. 4021?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protam Dean with support from Councilmember Gavin. I think he won the race. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think, Mr. Mayor, Truce McCarleton, our Parks and Recreation Director, joins us virtually this evening in her continuing pursuits of making the greatest parks in the face of the planet. She's pursuing a grant opportunity, as the resolution states, through the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan. This is one of the things that we hope strengthens that application, so. And she's available to tell us a little bit more about the wonderful things we could potentially do with this, with this additional funds.
Director McCarleton?
Hi, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Kind of, sort of.
Thumbs up, yeah?
Yes? Let's try again.
Okay, how about now?
Better.
Okay, all right. Thank you for having me virtually this evening. As the city manager said, lagging, okay, sorry. As the city manager said, this- As the city manager said, this application is, this resolution is to strengthen the application for the Community Development, Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan. This is a separate grant, you know, there's, as we talk about, there's a lot of different ways to identify different grants from state to federal to foundations. And so, I had conversations with the Community Foundation. This certainly fits in the category with the work that they do, so I felt strongly moving forward with it. As you are aware, we do have a very healthy budget for this grant for capital, I'm sorry, capital planned for this park to build an inclusive playground and park at J.C. But my goal, and the department's goal, is to get as much funding as possible from other outside sources to increase the scale and what we are able to offer. We have many inclusive items at our other parks, but this will be, the plan is for this to be a fully inclusive playground. So, that means all soft surface. That means ramp entry for play and a number of other play elements that you will see at other inclusive playgrounds. It will be one of the few in our direct area. There are some other inclusive playgrounds in Southeast Michigan that we did visit as a staff and within our department to gain ideas. And we are working on different designs based on how much funding we are able to get. So, I'm really excited about this grant. Most of the, the big work is all done and will be complete within the next day or two. So, obviously, support from City Council helps to strengthen that application along with all the other support documents and answers to questions that I've already done.
Well, thank you, Theresa. This is certainly very exciting, especially everything that you mentioned, having a fully inclusive playground, one of very few around here, something that we'd be extremely proud of. Questions for Ms. McCarleton while we have her? Theresa, you still there?
I'm here, yes.
You didn't answer the question, so I wasn't sharing. I'm just kidding. There was not a question.
I didn't hear a question. I can hear you great.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Director McCarleton, as the liaison to Parks and Recreation, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you and the, and your department in terms of really planning this and being open and inclusive and really exploring all the funding options. I mean, we've, we've had some great meetings and talking about those things. And I'm encouraged by this resolution in front of us. And I think that anything we can do to make our parks more accessible to all people is, is the way to go. And I love the thinking that you and your department have forged ahead with this. And, you know, anything we can do to support, we're happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-4021?
Price? Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to item number five, please, M-7621.
Motion number M-7621, matter of authorizing the city manager to sign the application for additional service credit purchase for Richard Chalmers approving two years of additional service credit. This purchase is allowed by the City of Berkeley MAPE agreement and meets all of the requirements of the MERS Plan document.
Is there a motion to approve M-7621?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner.
I think we're the mayor. As stated in the general item, this is a MAPE-provided benefit. This is Rick's in the group that we have extended a window for them to purchase additional time. He receives the defined benefit contribution now. And as part of moving to the defined contribution plan, we offered our existing employees a window in order to take advantage of purchasing time. So, Rick's gone ahead and stepped up and had us explore doing so. And it was favorable enough for both parties that we feel comfortable bringing this item to you this evening. It mirrors what you typically see from our merit employees, but it's, it has the same benefits to both parties as our merit employees. And so, happy to, to see Rick take advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you.
Mark Pollak is also available for questions as well.
As the city manager mentioned, it is mirrors or similar to a number of these that we've seen over the past few months. Are there any additional questions for the city manager or our finance director? It's pretty straightforward, and we're happy to be able to provide this and approve this as well as long, again, as it doesn't mean anyone's trying to sneak away from us any earlier. We don't, we don't want that, but we certainly are here to work with these individuals as well.
Ms. Mitchell, then, would you please call the roll on M-7621?
Valani? Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to item number six, please.
Resolution number R-4121, matter of approving an amended resolution to reapprove commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate application for 2219 Coolidge LLC located at 2219 Coolidge Highway for parcel number 25-18-431-032.
Is there a motion to approve R-4121?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Support. Support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner.
I think we're the mayor. We, this is a reapproval of an item that has already been addressed by council. It was for the former Los Alamos School Building. As we mentioned during the previous conversation, these certifications go over, undergo several layers of scrutiny at the local level, the county level, as well as the state level. So, this item comes back to us from the highest of those three, the State Treasurer's Office, who merely wanted us to address some housekeeping items in the language of the, of the initial resolution. So, we were able to accommodate that request. I apologize that it did not come sooner, but dealing with the state does, can sometimes delay things a little bit. But we have, we were able to work with John Sterren as well as Mr. Chris on creating language that we believe does meet the, the intent of the State Treasurer's letter, which is at your place setting this evening. And so, those items are highlighted in the yellow text that you have in front of you. All items, all, I'm sorry, all other items are consistent with the document that was already approved by council. So, we really, truly does not change the intent, does not change the effect. It merely puts them, merely puts this into a format that the State Treasurer's Office is comfortable with and acting upon the council's actions.
Mr. Chris, is there anything additionally you would like to, to add?
Thank you, Your Honor, through the chair. As the city manager indicated, this proposed amendment to the resolution before you this evening incorporates a couple of very minor but specific changes that are requested by the Department of Treasury. The specific changes are that the building permit is required to be included along with the resolution. Pretty straightforward. The next change is with respect to including the date of completion for the proposed project as it relates to this parcel, which is set forth in the proposed resolution as December 31st of 2022. And then.
Twenty-three.
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 Thank you. And then finally, Your Honor, the, the final change was the change in language to a statement that the applicant's request that the need for this tax exemption as it relates to the project, the city council believes that that, that has been substantially met by the applicant in order for the tax exemption to proceed forward. Otherwise, the resolution is consistent with the, the resolution that council adopted at its October 18th meeting.
So, just, I thank you for that. Just, again, a quick review. We are not changing any decision that we've made. The state said, yes, that's okay, but we need to have these three things with it, the items that are mentioned in the letter that we received from the Department of Treasury. We have updated those, the, the permit, as you mentioned, the date, and the final item that council has approved just.
And just one other item, Your Honor, as it relates to the urgency of considering this as a late item to your agenda. The Department of Treasury has indicated that it needs the revised resolution considered prior to December 14th. December 14th being the cutoff date. So, that's why this is for you at a late, with, with little notice to council.
Well, as sometimes happens from the state, they do just kind of have their own rules and requirements. And unfortunately, we do not have another meeting prior to that, so making sure that we had this on the agenda was important this evening, especially since, again, there are no changes to what council voted on in the past. It's merely making sure that we are consistent with the requirements from the state. Questions on this for city attorney or the city manager? Councilmember Price?
Yes, I have a question for the city manager. I appreciate that there's a defined end date now. Has the applicant been made aware of this end date as well?
The, the end date was selected based on the materials that they submitted to council and their application. So, it is, it is essentially the date that they set as far as their projected finish, time for completion of the project.
Fantastic. If they did not make this end date as they themselves projected, would that change their ability to receive the rehabilitation exemption certificate? And if so, are they aware of that?
They are aware of that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any additional questions, more comments? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll then on R-4121?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
No.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to communications. And before we begin communications, I do want to recognize Oakland County Commissioner Charlie Cavell is with us this evening. Charlie, if you'd like to come up and make a couple of comments, we'll let you go before we start our communication.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Hi, Mayor and Council. My name's Charlie Cavell. I'm the county commissioner for the 18th District, which is soon to become, thanks to redistricting, the 19th District, which includes Berkeley. So, I'm here first to introduce myself to all of you and let you know that I want to make myself available because we're a team. We got to work together. So, I just want to throw that out there. I've reached out to all you via email and other ways, so looking forward to getting to know you better. Thank you for your kindness thus far. And for anyone watching or listening, please reach out to me at any time, and I can give my phone number if that's.
Sure, easiest way, yeah.
So, 248-807-4347. Feel free to call or text anytime. And also, good luck with the $50,000 grant.
Well, thank you, Charlie, and thank you for being with us this evening to introduce yourself. And yes, you, you have been widely available already. And I certainly appreciate the outreach and trying to get to know what's important to each member here and what's important to our community that you will soon be representing. Thank you. Now, we move on to communications. And Ms. Mitchell, I have no idea. Who would you like to go first?
Councilmember Gavin.
Councilmember Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to start off by just saying a big thank you to Department of Public Safety, DPW, the Holiday Committee, and everyone who put so much effort into an incredibly magical day on Saturday. I know that'll be echoed by other councilmembers and the mayor to follow, but I do really believe that it rejuvenated a lot of folks and really brought big smiles to so many. So, it was such a thrill watching the community, being able to physically come back together to celebrate the season. So, just a heartfelt thank you to everyone that made that happen. Planning Commission, the next Planning Commission meeting will be December 21st at 7:00 p.m. And then the Environmental Advisory Committee won't be meeting up until, or into, excuse me, 2022. And just on that note, generally, I want to wish everyone the happiest of holidays and a wonderful New Year to all the residents, city staff, my fellow council members. It's certainly been a taxing couple of years, but there's a lot to be thankful for and even more to be hopeful for as we enter the New Year. So, stay safe and certainly enjoy your time with loved ones. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani.
Hi, yes. So, I would like to start off by thanking our Department of Public Safety, especially for their support of our schools last week. As a parent with school-aged children, it was really hard to send your kids to school last week. And having my child texting me in the middle of the day, which I know she's not supposed to do, but asking why are officers at the school and being able to explain that they're there not because there's a threat, but just to provide that extra security, I know it meant a lot to her and my own, you know, circle of friends. So many parents commented about what a great job Public Safety did, just trying to give a little bit of ease of mind during a really tough time. So, I want to thank them for that because from the kids on down to the adults, it, it made a difference. So, thank you. From Chamber News, we have our Berkeley Chamber of Commerce meeting this Thursday, our annual board meeting in celebration. And then other than that, that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the Parks and Recreation front, Community Park is getting a new playscape, and that's scheduled to be installed the week of December 13th, so it should be ready to roll for spring. Vacation camp is running at the end of December and registration is still open. You can call the Parks and Rec Department to register or go to recreation.berkleymish.org. And then senior exercise, there's an option to meet the instructor and take, take a trial class on December 7th from 10:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. It's a one-time class that you can take for free and see if you like it. And hopefully, they'll be offering that option to, to seniors in the, in the new year with new classes coming up. There's a lot of other programs and activities through Parks and Recreation, and you could check those out at recreation.berkleymish.org. And I know it's already, people have already thanked DPW, Public Safety Parade, all of that. But in addition, I just want to say, Mayor Turbrack, you can be absent from the parade anytime. I had a blast. I haven't been that close to Santa in years, a lot of years. But walking the parade, it, there, to your point, Councilmember Gavin, there was just a sense of joy and community, and people were just happy to be out. We were happy to be out. Our watches told us how fast we were going, that those horses were going at a good clip, you were following them. But it was just, it was a great evening to be in Berkeley, and I am truly grateful for all the support and every single person that made that happen. And I also want to give a nod to the DDA because it was with their cooperation and support of this event that we had some additional fun things. And it's great when we come together as a community and everybody pulls together and, and works on something so wonderful for everyone. So, thank you all.
Well, thank you, and thank you for pinch hitting. And I will tell you that my children very much disagree with you not attending the future.
That's true.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. To kind of continue the accolades here, kudos to the, to the volunteers, to the, to all the participants in the parade, to all the folks that attended. I saw a lot of very safe practices. In addition to being out together, we did so respectfully and responsibly, and that, that meant a lot, and that was very, very excellent. Santa was in fine form, and it was a pleasure to, to be near the magic man there as we welcome the holiday season formally to the, to the city. The Downtown Development Authority DDA meets this week's Wednesday, the 8th, at 8:30. Kudos again to all who participated in the Small Business Saturday. And then again, those again who participated in the parade. The DIA mural grand opening, big reveal, also occurred last Saturday at 4 o'clock. If you haven't seen it yet, it's on 12 Mile and North Robina there, right on the side of the, the Rite Aid Building by the Berkeley Marquee Theater. It is an official DIA installation. And so, it will be, continued to be treasured and honored not only here locally, but as part of the DIA family for decades to come. We're really happy with that there. Merry Month is upon us here in this fantastic month of December. And you too can visit downtownberkeley.com to, to learn about many of the upcoming events, including the Mary Ferry Scavenger Hunt, which is continuing now through the 31st, the Mary and Bright Shopping Nights, which are Thursdays from 5 o'clock until 9 o'clock, again, through the 23rd. And the Family Fun Shopping Trolley is on Saturday, December 11th, this Saturday, from 11 o'clock until 6, 11 a.m. till 6 p.m. So, feel free to enjoy the ride there to help you visit our downtown and, and continue to shop local here for, for all your holiday treasures and maybe grab a bite to eat and have a good time, too, along the way. The Historical Committee members were in the, in the parade as well, and they want to thank all the, the folks who gave them. to thank all the, the folks who gave them a, a fine, warm reception. It was great to see them out there. The new holiday tree ornament is available. I know many of you enjoy those every year, myself included. And the two holiday coffee mugs are available at the museum in the City Hall. The museum is open most Sundays from two to, two, two PM to four PM, and Wednesday from ten AM to one PM. And by most, most Sundays and Wednesdays, I mean, except for holidays and things like that, otherwise, they are dutifully there and willing to, to help answer questions. We do still have a few free giveaway items available from the thirtieth anniversary of the museum for folks who are able to make the journey and see the museum. And kudos, we've made some, some progress in accepting credit cards. I understand that the machine is in the building someplace, and we're just awaiting final configuration and training for the staff to be able to receive payment. And I want to thank the city staff in the, in the, for Mr. Pollak and his team for making it happen. And in the meanwhile, somebody in the last Saturday came in and, and was going to walk away without spending a hundred dollars because they had a credit card. But due to the fast thinking of our, of our, of our volunteers, they brought them into City Hall proper, this was on Wednesday, and they were able to complete the transaction at the clerk's desk there. And so everybody went away happy. They, they got the merchandise that they were hoping for and, and can take that to their family and loved ones.
That's fantastic.
The Technology Committee meets next week's Wednesday, the fifteenth, and we continue to look forward to being able to help move the Alexa skill forward. Now, for those of you, if you are unable to, to shop local, or if there's this one thing that, that nobody around here seems to happen to find, please remember your cybersecurity tips and be safe as you do your holiday shopping. Use different passwords with each of the companies for which you support, and make sure you look for the HTTPS or the little lock symbol on your browser thing to make sure that your connection is safe and secure with the, with your vendor or retailer of choice. And finally, it was David Taylor Klaus who said, "Words matter." And the words that matter most are the ones that you say to yourself. Now, I too have been thinking a lot about the recent actions and events that have been happening at the state and the federal level these last few days and weeks and months. People in positions of power and influence say things that cause other people to act and to react. People at home post idle thoughts and mistruths that cause other people to agree and to align. These words might seem like idle, flippant banter, but those words have the power to nearly kidnap state governors and almost topple our great democracy at the federal level. Those words also glorify violence and cause individuals to do horrible, unimaginable things. Please remember that in the city of Berkeley, our motto is "We Care." Please care about what you say and what you post. Please care about how people will hear you and how they will act. Together, we can overcome fear and anger and hate. Let's continue to ensure that we embody our city's motto in how we think, in the words that we tell ourselves, and the words that we tell to others. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As others have mentioned, the holiday season kicked off with a bang in Berkeley this past weekend. I wanted to thank the DIA and the DDA who unveiled that spectacular new mural on the side of the historic theater. And thank you to all of the volunteers and city staff who made the Holiday Lights Parade as brilliant as ever. It was wonderful to see the community gather in festive celebration again. Continuing with the holiday theme, the library will be hosting an outdoor letters to Santa station on Saturday, December eleventh, and Saturday, December twenty-fifth. You can decorate and write your letter, and then drop it in the special mailbox that's right at the library. There's no registration required for that activity. The library will also host a Night Before Christmas Storytime at seven PM on December twenty-second on the library's Facebook page. You want to register for that event so that you can pick up a bag of sweet treats to enjoy at home while watching. The Beautification Advisory Committee is preparing for their annual Holiday Spirit Awards. This year, they will be taking photographs of the most festive blocks in Berkeley as opposed to individual homes. They're focusing more holistically on the community spirit of the blocks. All participating blocks will be included on a holiday map that will be shared with the community. So connect and collaborate with your neighbors and get those decorations up by Friday, December seventeenth, to be included. Let's light up Berkeley with holiday cheer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan.
Thank you. Earlier last month, I was able to attend the National League of Cities Virtual Conference. I attended sessions related to COVID response, closing streets for businesses, business use, water infrastructure, safe streets, moving from fossil fuels, and attainable housing. And I found we encounter many of the same challenges that other communities across the nation do, but in many, if not most of these areas, we're actually ahead of the curve in our planning and in our response. I do think the one thing that I saw that we're lacking is sort of an overall strategic plan. I know we talked about that for some time, we're planning to meet together when COVID started hitting and making meeting harder, but I look forward to us getting a chance to get together, have those work sessions, so we can set those plans, get them down onto paper, and start making actions. The Tree Board has had no meetings since our last meeting. Their next meeting will be January twenty-fourth. However, if you are on the list to receive a tree, planting has already started for this fall, and DPW anticipates it'll be finished sometime next week. Tree care instructions will then be provided after planting is done, but there won't be anything you need to do with the trees until the spring. The Zoning Board of Appeals will meet on Monday, the thirteenth. They're hearing a case on a grandfather duplex that allowed its status to lapse, but it's now requesting to be a duplex again. Then finally, I'm sure most people have heard now of the new COVID variant, Omicron, and I know we don't know a lot about it yet, but the early indication is that the vaccine is still effective in preventing serious disease. And our best defense still is masking and vaccination. So if you're eligible, get a booster, get the vaccine, this is going to be our quickest path to getting back to normal. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think, Mr. Mayor, happy to have the audit report with you, present to you this evening. The audit takes about two weeks of, of very intensive work, so I want to thank Mark Pollak, Lori Fielder, and Sue Redden for, for their work, not only for those two weeks, but it really is two weeks of reporting out all the good practices of twelve months out of the year. And for that, we thank our entire staff for their due diligence, they're, they're making sure that we're holistically following good practices. And so it really is a staff triumph to, to allow us to come before you guys and, and say, here's the forward progress, here's the things that we've been able to do, and here's where we've invested in the community based on city council's vision. So I do want to say thank you to Mark, but also hi, his entire team, the well-oiled machine, as he likes to say. So, but thank you to everyone. Two other items I have, our Coolidge Oversight Task Force is scheduled to meet on December thirteenth. Couple weeks ago, you may have noticed, the, the counters were back out, and so we're looking forward to going over that data as it's presented by TIA. And also, the next step would be, or also like to report out that we'll be holding an administrative hearing on our marijuana business licenses. We had one additional recommended, recommended applicant that we scored, also in a public meeting, and now the administrative hearing is also open to the public as well. So those that are subscribed to that would have seen announcements and press releases going out today, and we've, we've also talked into some of our local journalists as well about where we're at. And I know council knows this already, but for those at home, we actually have other communities reaching out to us to say, hey, Berkeley seems like it's, it's on the ball with this stuff, let, let us know what you've done, we'd like to know, hear more about your process. And so while this has been a very, it's painful is the first one that came to mind, but I don't know. This has been riddled with stops and starts. We are still on the front end of this, and so other communities that did not jump in at the same time that we did are now looking to us as a leader in, in this industry. And so it's something to be proud of, even, and it's something to remind ourselves of as we go through, but it's been a pretty difficult process, but one that is, is hopefully getting close to being wrapped. And will bring positive businesses to the community and reflects the, you know, seventy-plus voters that opted to bring this, seventy-plus Berkeley voters that opted for, in favor proposal, one of twenty eighteen, so. So good things are coming, even in, I know it, it seems very difficult. And last but not least, I, I want to reflect the, the thank yous of the council as well. I did get to ride with Public Safety and Public Works during the parade. I got to be in the, the last car with former councilman and, and current emergency manager, Jack Blanchard. So we got to see all of the reactions by the time we were going by those kids. We got to see the, oh, my gosh, moment up and down city streets. And so it took a lot to pull that off, a lot of staff time, but a lot of passion, too, and it was, it was fantastic to be a part of. So thank you to those guys, not only as somebody gets to work with them, but also as a father of two.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further this evening.
All right. Well, just very quickly, I, again, I want to echo the thanks for the Holiday Lights Parade and the Santa Drive By. I've seen many pictures. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend at the great dismay of my children, who thought Christmas would be canceled if I wasn't there. But I'm, I'm glad that it, it went well, as it typically does. And again, you know, Cindy, the team, Denise with the juniors, Public Safety, Public Works just do a tremendous job in our community. I also want to express my sincere condolences to the parents in Oxford that senselessly lost children last week, and to the entire Oxford community as they try to pick up the pieces. As a parent, I can think of no worse feeling in the world than getting a text or a phone call from a child and, and, you know, letting us know if there's an active shooter loose in their school building. In a place that's always supposed to be safe, right? That's what a school is, you're there to learn and educate in a, in a safe, very comfortable environment. Sadly, tragedies like the one that happened in, in Oxford have become far too frequent in our country, and even more distressing is the fact that many people are getting desensitized to hearing about it. If it doesn't happen in your area, it's kind of a thing on the news, and maybe that's all the reaction is, and, and that's incredibly unfortunate and sad and really traumatic. The why that these things continue to happen is, is a discussion on a larger scale. But, but here in Berkeley, I know that our district is following all of the best practices to keep schools safe as they should be. That doesn't mean that Berkeley is immune to something tragic happening, but every training program, every process and procedure is in place to keep our kids, which certainly includes mine, safe. But there is always more that we can do, and I know that myself and our Public Safety are committed certainly to, to working with our district on that mission of keeping our kids safe, and we will continue to have conversations if there's any way that we can continue to make our kids feel comfortable and safe at school. It was, it was certainly difficult for anybody that has kids, and then you have a day of school canceled, and they don't understand why necessarily, and having those conversations is, is not easy, and I can't even imagine having to have that conversation if something like that happened in one of our schools. So I want to thank our school board for what they do, and I want to thank our Public Safety for continuing to keep not only our kids safe at school, but everybody safe in our community. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Henan. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. The December sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Thirty-Ninth Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.